And I've made a list here of what the options are and on the back of the page.
Lori, can I just ask you to really speak into the mic for those at home?
Sure.
I'm sure they'll want to hear this.
Yeah. So there are multiple options for taxpayers to make their payments. On this handout is the listing and on the back of the page you'll see where the credit card, debit card fees are. But on the first one, it's just mailing the check or money order with the payment stub to the remit to address that's on the bill. The second is you can obviously come to the town hall, we'd love to see you. Come in person with either cash, check, or a money order. We now are accepting credit card payments, credit card and debit card payments at the town hall. But just to be aware, it's not the town that's charging these fees, it's the credit card service provider that is charging the fees. And again, the fees are on the back and they can be, you know, pretty high, but this just allows people just that other option. And it really helps people that, say for instance, their excise bill is flagged and they can't renew their license until their excise payments are paid in full. So this gives them the option to come in and have it taken care of immediately. So then they can go right to the registry and renew their licenses. The other options that we have are the online payment options and there's the town website, which is www.carverma.gov. And you have three options to pay online. It's either by electronic check, credit card, or debit card. If it is, if you're paying by electronic check, you need to have your routing number and your bank account number information to input that into the system. And there is a 25 cent fee, processing fee, that the bank charges for that. And then again, we accept the credit cards, MasterCard, Visa, American Express, and Discoverer. Again, there will be the fees charged.
Excuse me, when you mentioned there debit cards carry the same fee structure as a credit card, so if you're paying online, it falls in line with the credit card charge as opposed to Visa debit flat rate of $3.95?
Well, the, correct. Visa just charges $3.95.
Oh, oh, I got you.
All the other ones.
Oh, I'm with you, okay.
Yeah.
Visa debit though, only a Visa debit card.
It should be Visa and debit and credit card. Should be both of those.
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, what we continue to try to do and Lori's done is to try to continue to provide customer service to people. And this is just another option for them to pay for their bills. People live in a hectic environment, they may have dual income people, both working, they can't come to town hall. And this is much easier for them to do, let alone the issue when you do have somebody that has a motor vehicle violation and they're in Boston or something and to get back down here is not realistic. So this is just more of the services that we're providing and just wanted to make that announcement to everybody.
Right. And the online payments seem to be a big hit. There was a large increase on how people were paying with that option as well.
And this isn't just for real estate taxes, this could be for the, for anything.
Personal property, yep, the excise, real estate.
Any bill in town at this point.
Well, my office doesn't take care of like the dog licenses and the permits, those are.
Those are done elsewhere.
Right.
Any other questions?
No question, I think it's a great option. I think having more ability and, you know, I know lots of people that like to use credit cards because you get points with it.
Sure, yeah, yeah, exactly.
But, yeah, I love it, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Sarah?
We are set.
Basically, I just had one question, this is posted on our webpage?
Yes.
Town website, so people will know?
This isn't, we do have on the webpage that they can pay online, but I will get this letter out there as well.
Yeah, just so, I want to just make sure all the information, including the fee structure, gets out there for everybody.
Sure, yep. Yes, I'll do that tomorrow.
That was going to be my question, if someone goes online and they see that they can pay, is there a warning anywhere telling them that there's a fee associated by paying online?
I'll double check that, there should be.
Just something that might refer them to see fee schedule or something?
Yes, yep, okay.
Just to make sure.
When they process their bill, does it, do they pop up?
When they process, it's going to show up online that, you know, this, so much is the tax payment, then this would be an interest.
Before they initiate the process, it'd be good for them to know before they go into it.
They just wouldn't hit the, you know, submit button if they see that the fees were.
Well, I think if this is posted, this says that, so that should do it.
I just want to make sure that, you know, for instance, some people are so used to paying everything online, they just might pop in, pay it, and not realize there was a fee associated with it, so.
Okay, yep.
I'm more familiar with Amazon purchases, not me myself.
In your household?
In the household, there are a lot of Amazon purchases that take place and I don't know that there's much.
So it's pugs go online a lot, huh?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Great, great job.
Thanks Lori, thanks for doing a great job.
Thanks.
All right, and now update from town clerk Lynn Doyle on the recreation committee and a new website.
Got here just on time. Good evening. So I am on the recreation committee and the recreation committee has been working really hard in conjunction with Mike Santos and Mike Schultz from the school to ramp up some of the programs in town that are available to all the, all the different people, all the residents, not just children anymore, but we have adult programs and we have senior programs and we have all the athletic programs. So we have a new website that Mike Schultz and Mike Santos have been instrumental in getting it up and running. And it's carverrecreation.com, so www.carverrecreation.com. Right now, we have about 247 members that are registered on this website and it allows people to log in, become a member, and then once they become a member, they can sign up their family members as well and they can get them into programs. And they can also pay online.
Are there fees associated with the membership?
No fees associated with the membership, but if you sign up for a program, there would be fees involved. So we have, right now, we have all the athletic, all the town athletic activities and fields that are monitored on this website. And so people have, if they're interested in doing certain sports or activities, that's all on the website now so they can just log in and get their kids signed up and pay for their fees through the website.
So, so, excuse me, so we have a credit card ability through the website as well?
Yep, it's, I believe it's through PayPal because it's a, it's not just our website, it's a, you know, vendor who provides this website to various towns, whoever wants to sign up and be part of it. We also have online registration for enrolling people into our recreation programs as well. So this past summer, we piloted three programs. All of them were really pretty successful for the first three programs that we've had on the website. One was Cooking with Chef and we had 13 kids sign up with that for ages seven through 10 and they had a great time. We had Carver Art Camp and we also had Kinder Dance. So summertime is a little tough to start up new programs because usually, you know, if the parents are working, they already have them involved in other activities or camps, but considering that, we did pretty well. And then this fall, we have a whole lineup of different programs. We have adult volleyball, we have adult Pilates, we have adult basketball, Thanksgiving Boot Camp, that will be coming up the first week in November.
Do you want to describe what Thanksgiving Boot Camp is?
It's not, it's not exercising, let's put it that way. It's a how to eat, how to cook a good Thanksgiving dinner and eat a lot. Holiday wreath class. All of these classes will be in more detail on the website, so if you're interested, please log on and check them out. Also, the more frequently you get on, we're adding more programs all the time. So we have a bunch of programs coming up for the winter as well. We have a 55-plus bowling league that we're going to start up.
That seems a little ageist.
Well, no.
Is it only for people under 55 or over 55?
Over 55, 55-plus, 55-plus. We have lots of programs for the kids too. We have coed soccer for the kids ages eight through 13, coed field hockey, these are all kid programs.
Those 55-plus as well?
No. So, so besides that, just to let people know, we also have a big event coming up this Saturday. So the Carver Recreation Committee itself, right now, there's only three members. And they're very active members, they're very busy members. But with the help of Mike Santos and Mike Schultz and also, I want to give credit to Elaine Weston and Shelby Blair as well because they've been very supportive with what we've been trying to accomplish. We've been able to pull off a lot of different things just within the past couple of months, so it's been kind of exciting. And if people are interested, it's a good time, if you're interested in getting on board with us during this exciting time, to sign up and be a member because we're still looking for two more members on the Carver Recreation Committee. But this weekend, this Saturday, we have a Halloween event that we're doing for children ages three through 10. And we're going to have face painting and we're going to have some ghoulish items in some feely boxes that, you know, people will get to touch, such as brains and eyeballs and things like that. We're going to have pumpkin tic-tac-toe and spider ring toss and, you know, a few different activities that will be kind of cute and very age appropriate. And we'll have some goodies as well for the kids. It's from 12 to 2 and it is at the high school, middle school cafeteria. And you'll enter through the back entrance, so anybody going there this weekend, please come around to the back of the school, don't try to enter through the school, we'll have the back doors open to the cafeteria. And so that's, that's a big event this weekend.
Just one question on that.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like something I might bring my grandchildren to.
Sure.
Any clowns?
No clowns, no clowns. But I can't, I can't promise that the face painter won't paint somebody as a clown, so.
That's just funny.
Well, Ron was, Ron was entertained this weekend at, at the Carver Farmer's Market with the clown that was.
I think entertained, I think people were entertained by Ron's reaction to the clown.
Yes, we were.
Running scared.
Ron apparently does not like clowns, so.
Any questions, moving on.
I do want to just finish up a couple, couple more things. We're also working on, on March 14th, there may be a, we may be sponsoring a Carver Community Night at a Boston Celtics game.
Ooh.
So keep an eye out for that, it's going to be at 8:00 PM. And it's, you know, going to be a fun event. They, they bring a group of kids in and the kids can be part of the lineup, you know, and high five people and, you know, get to meet the Celtics and it's an exciting event for them.
Cool, yeah.
They continue to work on the Carver Youth Needs, the sports and so forth, and we're continuing to try to update the fields and so forth and see better ways of using the fields. So we have Forest Street Field right now that it has not been used for a few years now and we're working to update that field, we're going to expand it and make it more usable for people who want to use T-ball or flag football or things like that.
I thought Pop Warner was up there.
They're doing a little, not a lot though, not a lot, yeah. So we're, we're going to do things to enhance the field, make it a little bit better, more functioning. So that's it.
Great.
Anybody have any questions?
It's nice to see the committee taking off, I hope we get a couple more members for you so that.
Yeah.
Are you down to three members?
We're down to three members.
So you don't burn out.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Big events like this, the Saturday event, even though it's only a couple hours, it's a lot of work and so, but we do have volunteers and I meant to thank them too as well. We have volunteers from the high school students and we also have Girl Scout volunteers as well, so, you know, here's a shout out to them as well. Thank you very much for volunteering, we're hoping it will be a good, a good event.
Excellent. Sarah, anything?
Great job.
Thank you Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, one quick question, is this webpage linked from the town and the school's website?
This is.
If it's not, can we get it?
It's not linked to the town website at this time, I don't believe. That's something I could do pretty easily, but no, you'd want to go into www.carverrecreation.com and that will bring you into the website to sign up for the programs.
Yeah, but you probably definitely want to get it from the town and the school website too.
Still a link back and forth.
Yep, great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, ooh, do I have to wait to 9:25? Because that's what's listed for the.
Or 7:25?
Or 7:25 rather, right, but we're not quite there yet.
You do the Carver Cultural Council?
Yeah, okay, let's do requests for appointment of the Carver Cultural Council, Jill Martins.
She's not here today.
Do you have her packet in the?
Her sheet is in there.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jill Martins to the Carver Cultural Council.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Do you have a motion to second? All those in favor of appointing Jill Martins to the Carver Cultural Council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 4-0-0.
We can do poll here. It's a 7/3, 7:25?
Yep, so we'll now move to the poll hearing from EverSource and Verizon about the poll on Rochester Road. Welcome.
Good evening.
Could you go ahead and use the microphone and give us your name, please, and who you're working for?
Karen Ray from EverSource Energy.
Want to pull the microphone a little closer.
Karen Ray from EverSource Energy.
You're on.
Okay. EverSource Energy is requesting me permission from the town of Carver to relocate one poll, poll number 20 over 16, and remove three polls, 20 over 107, 20 over 108, and 21, 20 over 108S on Rochester Road. This is a Mass DOT project, they're requesting we do this work so they can replace the Middleborough Bridge.
They're finally going to work on the bridge?
Get out of town.
I think that makes it a go right there.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
And second, further discussion, questions?
I do have one more question. And the abutters were notified?
Yes, they were.
With green cards and so on?
Yes, I think the town does that, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Anything else?
It's good to see the project started.
I'm sorry?
I said it's good to see that project moving forward.
All right, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, you too. We are now at the town administrator update, well ahead of schedule, don't blow it, Michael.
He allowed himself an hour for this. It takes an hour.
Good evening, everyone. Annually, we go through the process, our four-step budget process, to establish what the available funds, the anticipated funds for the town to spend for both the school operations and for the general government operations. With that, we had a presentation in our last joint meeting with both the board and selectmen and the school committee to kind of go over this in detail. Since then, Meg Lemay, Scott Neef, and Brad Brothers and I have been working on just reviewing and going through all of our different numbers, if you will. What I am going to be asking the board to do is to approve this chart with the exception of the four numbers that are in yellow. And I'll get to that in a second. Basically, what we have is this year, we're anticipating increasing the revenue from $39.2 million to $40.17 million is what we anticipate the revenue to come in from, from both raising taxes, from new growth, from state aid, from local receipts, and meals taxes. So this is the first year we will be crossing the $40 million number for revenue coming into the community. From there, we then look at the middle of the sheet, which includes our fixed expenses. The first block of these are cherry sheet offsets. These are the assessments where the state gives us money, but the state also takes it away before we even get it. And those costs are outlined there for about $1.3 million. Next item is that our capital and debt stabilization fund, which pays for our debt service but for the elementary school, as well as our new equipment, is listed out at $2.8 million. We then have our transfers to the North Carver Water District, the general stabilization fund, the compensated absentee fund, and then the additional funds going to our OPED trust fund. From there, we then go to town meeting articles, the reserve fund for the finance committee. And what you see here is the Old Colony VOTEC number, this number is actually less than what it was originally budgeted last year. We did have a student that no longer, we had at least one student that was no longer going to Old Colony, so that impacted our rate that we paid in FY '18. So in essence, what that number represents for FY '19 is what the actual FY '18 rate was, plus 5%. Then we have the elementary excluded debt piece, this is the $100,000 that comes out of our solar project that helps pay for, offset the amount of debt that went out in the excluded debt program when we did the elementary school. That's what the residual is, is the $1.09 million, otherwise it would be $1.19 million. And then we have our gradual increase with snow and ice, which goes up 5% from last year. Again, this number is still significantly less than what we actually spend, but we are trying to grow that incrementally. So we're looking at, after you take out those fixed expenses of $7.1 million, that leaves $32.9 million available to split between the town and the school. This is $30,000 more than what was projected when we did our 10-year forecast last year. We've been able to go through those numbers and, and try to fine tune those, which then leaves us with $598,000 of, if you will, excess money compared to last year, or additional money compared to last year. That is 1.8%, it's slightly higher than our 1.4% that we have on average. And that's split up between the school, which receives 70.3% of that, which would give them a budget of $23.189 million. Again, slightly higher than we talked about when we had our joint meeting. And then the town budget would be $9.79 million to run the town operations. I'm going to skip the yellow numbers now, we'll talk about that a little bit later. The last four items that we have on the sheet, I think are really important to demonstrate some of the leadership, the fortitude the board has taken in implementing your financial management policies. If you take the bottom number, or the second from the bottom number, where you had the OPED unfunded liability as of 7/1/2011, that has a number of $62 million, which is really about one and a half times our revenue that we collect in the town. Prior to you making any changes, that's what your OPED liability would have been. Interestingly, if you go over to 2028, 10 years from now, that goes to $100 million, which is what your OPED liability would have been. Now, as a ratio, we went from 1.5 of revenue to now double the revenue that you would be collecting in town. I'm sorry, yeah, the revenue you'd be collecting in town, which we're showing at that point about $48 million if you go up to the top of the sheet. So in those 10 years, you know, you go from one and a half times your revenue to two times your revenue. But if you backtrack and look at some of the changes that the town has done, when you look at, if you will, that brownish number going across, that shows that our actual liability is now $41 million, which is relatively equal to our revenue. And if you go out 10 years, it's $50 million, which is just a million, $2 million over what the revenue is there, but it's not two times. And that's a key point there, is that as you look at these structural changes, over 10 years, you've saved $50 million in liability, you've cut your OPED liability in half through making these incremental changes that the board has made. And to me, you know, that is huge as we look at the long-term solvency of the town. Because had you have not done that, you would be pulling away additional operational revenue every year to pay for these other expenses, which meant, you know, in the charts that we showed with the school committee, your operational revenue percentage-wise would start to decrease as your benefits started to increase. Now this is actually at least keeping this level, more or less, over these 10 years. So again, I think when you hear from your auditor this year, when he sees these numbers and he goes through our books, I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised at his, his view on this. But I can't think of a better way of explaining this, when you look at the ratio compared to where we were to where we are now over that same time period.
And that's not contemplating any other actions we may take as we progress through the years that might also act, as some of our past actions have, to decrease that future exposure. I mean, at some point, for instance, when the cap, when we feel we've reached the peak on the capital stabilization contributions, we could divert some of those monies toward increasing the OPEB donation, which would act to decrease our, and get us to the goal that we're after.
That's correct. I mean, where we want to get to is that we can, you know, pay our actual cost every year. And so that we're not putting this burden off to the next generation, so we're, we're paying for our current active employees and we're paying for all of our retirees, you know, in essence, out of our operating budget. I mean, that's where you eventually want to get to.
Well, I wanted to mention, and I know we brought it up when we had a good, healthy discussion about this when we had the joint meeting with the school committee, that when, a lot of times when we're involved in making decisions about the budget and the future, this is what we have in mind, so that, you know, instead of putting a Band-Aid on and kicking the can down the road as we have in the past, we are trying to be look ahead and try to make sure that while we're taken care of today, we're also looking down the road. As I say, the board, 30 years from now, is going to give us a big thanks, well, maybe not. They'll owe us a big thanks, because if a board 30 years before us had done this, we wouldn't be in the position we're in now.
And I think even beyond that, it shows that, you know, you're being responsible. You're taking your job serious and you're being responsible and trying to deal with the issues at hand versus pushing them off, which we see happening on, you know, the federal level and sometimes on the state level all the time. So for that, you know, again, I think you need to be recognized for the kudos in doing this, you're being financially responsible. So. The only other thing that I'll, that I'll mention here is that last year, when we put together our budget, particularly for state aid, we anticipated that we were going to have an increase. And after the budget was done in July, we got a portion of that increase, but we didn't get everything. So our net state aid did not meet what our projections were last year, we overprojected. And again, we knew last year that we were making some significant cuts in the school because of the mismanagement that had been done from a financial standpoint. This year, when we looked at our state aid, in essence, what we have done is, is more or less just actually level funded what we anticipate getting for state aid. Now, you're going to see the numbers actually a little higher here, but where you actually pick up some of the larger numbers are down below with the offsets. So the state works these little things where they give you this extra money and that goes up hypothetically, say, say 1%, but then they take 2% away from what they've given you to, to adjust that. So what we have done for state aid this year is, we believe we'll be lucky, and I emphasize we'll be lucky, is if our net state aid stays equal as it compared to last year. And when you look at. And when you look at the trend, um, you know, we're basically, our net state aid is around eleven million dollars, um, that we pull in after all the adjustments are done. And I say that because, um, there is some income tax adjustments that are happening, um, back to citizen petitions that were done several years ago. Uh, also, the state, uh, revenue, uh, was down the beginning of the year. Um, there is some anticipation there will be nine C cuts throughout the year. Um, so, you know, this year, we're not, we're trying to, you know, be a, more conservative on that, that piece. But if there is a cut, then, then we project it too high. Uh, but at least this point, we are just level funding. So with that, um, what I would request the board to do is to-
You're gonna address the yellow numbers a little more?
I'll do that after that, because they, they don't apply to this vote, and I would just wanna keep the conversation separate.
I'll make into a motion to approve the, uh, the numbers contained in the green column, uh, so, uh, other than those in yellow. I'll second that one.
Further questions, discussions?
Yes, I, I do. I, I, I think what, uh, we're doing with OPEB, although I probably shouldn't talk about OPEB, what we're doing in terms of looking out for future generations is a good idea. But I, I think it locks us in too. If there are, if things come up, if we're voting on a ten-year plan, does that mean we can't make adjustments down the road?
No, we're only voting on this year at this point. We're, we're looking at what-
What if things come up this year, where we need to make adjustments? We've already, it's locked in? We can't do that? It's just a question. I'm, I wanna know.
Well, we're not, I don't imagine we're locked in until town meeting votes it. Then, then we'd be locked in.
Are we locked in as a board?
Well, you as a board have your financial management policies. So to some extent, you're locked in until you change your financial management policies, because this follows the financial management policies. Having said that, is, this is, you know, an active for FY nineteen is the projection, and everything beyond that is, is just, you know, in the, in the white, it is a projection. Can the board change its policies at any particular point? They can. Uh, but, as we said before, and as we talked about at the joint meeting, the risk you ru- ru- run is if you change your policies at this point, you're gonna negatively impact your bond rating potentially when you go out to, uh, finance, um, the, uh, police station and potentially, uh, COA addition and, um, some other things. So it really comes back to the financial policies the town meeting adopted and you've, you've actually adopted as well. That's what this is all based upon, so.
But, I mean, that said though, if the board as a whole felt that we were faced with such an emergency that we had to revisit this, we, we always have the option to do that.
Of course.
And we might suspend a financial policy for a year if we're faced with that type of a crisis.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah. I took this as a, excuse me, I took this as a forecast. You know, this is projecting and by the plan and by the process, so.
Well, I mean, these, we are saying that this, these are the numbers we're mu- we're using to move forward this year.
Exactly.
Unless we're faced with some catastrophic, uh, you know, uh, change in, in, as we go forward.
Well, Mr. Clerk, actually, according to the agenda, we'd be voting to, it's, the request is to approve the ten-year forecast.
Okay. But while, but I, but I, I thought the town administration asked us to focus on the green numbers.
Focus on everything but the, the yellow numbers.
But it, we're still, we're still locking this in as, as, as this is our ten-year plan, and then when we get closer and further along the budget process, then we'll lock in the numbers that are in the green column.
No, no, you knock in everything now.
Okay.
Annually, what we do is we lock this in today, you know, at this time of the year, and that's how our budget's built.
Does that need to require a separate vote then?
No.
Okay.
And then next year, you, we come back and we reevaluate this. Or if there is some catastrophic emergency that you need to adjust your policies, then you always have the right to unvote what you've done. But this is the first step in our budget planning process, the first of four steps. So this sheet needs to be approved minus those four yellow letters.
All right, so I'll amend, I'll amend my motion. I think I focused the motion on the, just the green column. So I'll amend the motion to say that, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the numbers other than yellow, recognizing the green column represent the numbers we want to, uh, proceed with as an indicator of what our budget is gonna be for, for this fiscal year, and that the rest of it represents a forecast that we're accepting at this time.
Can I hear a second?
I can second that. I think that's well said, just as long as we can change if we have to later on, so.
Yeah, that's my only provision too.
Yep. Cool.
Anything else?
Nope. Again, I just emphasized it's been reviewed by the school administration as well.
All right. How those in favor of, uh, approving the ten-year forecast, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous.
All right. So let me hit the yellow letters, numbers.
Okay.
Um, and if you see on the left there, in parentheses, it talks about placeholder. So Meg and Brad have been working on, you know, as we talked about at the last joint meeting, that there are several items that we want to go forward and put into a shared column. And with that, um, that means they would have to be equally taken out of each budget, moved above the line, so that no individual department, if you will, was harmed, so that there's an equal spread as to how that happens. Uh, what's shown right here is Medicare and retirement. I think in our last meeting, we talked about the retirement calculation. Uh, even though we have one bill from Plymouth County as to what our actual cost is, how that's divvied up between the school and the town is really a black box that no one can agree upon. And so it's better to have that as a shared cost going forward. In addition to that, what you see also is property and liability insurance. Uh, right now, we don't have a, an understanding, a, a solid number on what the, um, property cost is gonna be for insurance for the elementary school, which is obviously going to be going up just like the fire station did. So where we get, again, one bill from, uh, Maya, um, it's actually easier for us to have those into a shared category. So this is just very simple math, that hypothetically, if the, um, town Medicare was, uh, two point five million dollars, and it's approximately that number, and the townwide property was about four, five hundred thousand, which is slightly under that number, that if you took those out of the budgets, and, and we have, you know, more detailed math how that would play out, which is what Brad and Meg are working on, you would then have an adjustment of the overall budget for the school and the town of the twenty point six million dollars and the nine point two million dollars. So their overall budget would go down, but those responsibilities for those four items that I mentioned would no longer be a responsibility of the individual department. It would move up above the sheet into the shared cost. So again, we talked about this at our joint meeting, there was an agreement to move forward doing that. Um, this is just showing a format, how that would play out. Uh, we don't have the exact numbers as to how that's going to be finalized, but whatever those exact numbers are, they would come out of the numbers you've already approved, the twenty-three point one eight nine million dollars and the nine point seven million dollars. It's just that Brad and Meg are going through and just making sure that all the Ts are crossed, all their Is are dotted, and it's an equal and equitable distribution, and neither side is harmed. So we're still working through that process.
Are we thinking that when we, by the time we get to town meeting, we may be representing it as a, as a, instead of, uh, come, into a combined column as opposed to separated between schools and town?
Yes. I mean, as, as we talked at the joint meeting, uh, the answer is, you know, we were actually hoping to have it by tonight, we just didn't. Uh, but by the, next time we have a joint meeting, we'll have those detailed numbers, which basically the administration of the school and the town will agree with, which I think was what the school committee and the selectmen wanted us to agree to it, and as long as it was fair, then fine, let's do it if all the administrators are behind it. So at our next joint meeting we'll have in December, we, we anticipate having those numbers for you.
Right. And I, I have spoken with the town administrator, and, um, the property and casualty insurance comes up for renewal next July. So we will work in advance of that to get outside and get some quotes other than just Maya, uh, and see whether or not there's an opportunity for some savings. Sometimes the incumbent sharpens their pencil when they know there's competition, so, um, I think it's worthwhile, because any sort of a savings we realize obviously helps the budget. So we haven't gone out to bid in a number of years, so I think it's a good opportunity to, to do that.
Anything else?
So moving on, if you may, I might, oh my, Mr. Chairman, is the capital, um, building project updates. Um, the elementary school continues to move a long way ahead of schedule, and, um, it is, as you saw in our last joint meeting, it continues to be well under budget. Um, we've also had, um, some meetings going over the technology that's gonna be going into the school. And, um, overall, for the school technology, uh, that, looks like that's gonna stay within budget as well. Um, the only caveat that I'll make to that is that, um, we, we are making a strategic decision to migrate our primary network server, if you will, that will be a townwide server to run out of the elementary school. So we are going to have additional expenses, um, beyond our typical, um, IT budget to make the, make it a townwide hub, uh, which is gonna require some additional fiber that we have to run to some of the buildings. Uh, but this really gets back into the plan that Steve Mahoney presented at, uh, a previous Board of Selectmen's meeting, uh, so we can have a consolidated IT system around, around town. Now, having said that, is that even though we'll run our hub out of there, we will also have backup locations elsewhere in the town, uh, but, um, you know, we wanna have the main brains, if you will, run out of the new elementary school, 'cause it's designed for that. Um, so, uh, that is moving along well also. Uh, the middle high school, uh, the middle high school, um, I think as Scott had mentioned at a previous meeting, uh, they're still working through the last doors and windows. Uh, there was an ordering issue with those, uh, so those have been delayed, but they are being installed after school and on the weekends, and they hope to have that done, I believe, in the next month, uh, to get those remaining doors and windows installed. The roof and the boiler, those are all fully functional, it's just the doors and windows, uh, due to manufacturing delays are in there. Now, that's also-
Okay, they got, they finished off the middle school gym, 'cause that was the last roof they had to do, right?
Yes. That's all done. And, um, yeah, so they're just, um, in the process of finishing that up, and the developer or the contractor is the one that has to eat these additional cost. And, uh, also with the moving on to the sports complex at the middle high school, uh, we did have a meeting of our, 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 our focus group, our design team, if you will, uh, for the middle high school with Scott Neef, myself, and Gary Garretson, uh, Mary Ross, and Dave Sigintoff. Um, and, um, we did go through the review and select a preferred landscape architect, uh, for the site, um, and we're in the process of just working out a contract with them to do the work. So that's all moving along very well. So again, our capital projects still all remain on budget, um, and, um, you know, one has a time delay and one has an accelerated schedule right now, so.
And we can categorically deny the rumor that either one of the projects had stopped for a while due to lack of funding.
I, you know, I, Elaine and I had a long talk, and she's gonna start paying the bills on time from now on.
Don't mess with her. She's right.
No. All our bills are paid on time, there's no lack of funding, the town meeting authorized the funding, the funds in our accounts, and actually, all our bills are paid promptly on time. So anyone that created that rumor is nothing more than a rumor, and occasionally, we have a couple of those in town. It really was a rumor.
Yeah. All right. Want you to move on to the rollout of the employee performance review in October. And I believe Elaine will bring us up to date on that.
So I actually have a few updates from Human Resources. First, I just wanted to mention in FY seventeen, uh, that we had the highest amount of credits earned from our insurer, which is Maya. And the reason why they do it this way, have you earned credits, is just to ensure that your employees are protected. You earn credits by doing trainings, uh, we did back training, driver training, uh, chainsaw safety training, um, they can do something as simple as just reading from a memo, uh, something from Maya that says, you know, this is how to be safe when you're working in a trench, or something like that. So I know we're gonna be looking at other insurance companies, but that's just something to think about. I don't know that other companies, um, offer this. That's something that is unique to Maya. So, um, in FY sixteen, we received eight thousand ninety-three dollars in reward money towards the town, and in FY seventeen, we, we received eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four. Uh, in addition, the town's personnel code was updated in two thousand sixteen, and then again in two thousand seventeen, and will be, continue to be revised annually as needed. This hadn't been done, um, in ten years previous. The last revision done was in two thousand and ten. Uh, we also started a new onboarding process for new hires. Uh, this helps the town, protects it liability-wise. Um, this new process ensures that all new employees are signing the correct paperwork, policies, um, and so if for any reason, you know, there's a claim, we have proof that the employee, um, has read a policy and has received it. And for the performance evaluations, again, that is something that has not been done town-wide in several years. Um, so this month, we are rolling out the townwide employee review process. I just wanna also mention one more thing. It's something that probably you can't see, but, uh, the town has saved thousands of dollars in advertising costs for open positions. Um, we are constantly seeking out alternative ways to find qualified employees. These candidates can be found on Indeed, on MMA, specific websites catered to a specific, um, specialty, uh, such as like a council on aging website or a planning board website. In addition, Facebook, of course, and a lot of these are free, or just paying an annual membership of, say, two hundred and fifty dollars, um, whereas the newspaper costs, sorry, upwards of eight hundred and fifty dollars per advertisement, depending on how many words you put in the ad. So, um, that has been ongoing for the last two years also.
Excellent.
You know, one of the things that we do, and why I asked Elaine to talk about this, is, um, there's a lot of work that happens behind the scenes, um, that we, you know, when you set policies, we go off and run. And, um, you know, one of your policies you established a couple of years ago, or last year, I believe it was, was to really move forward with the HR program. And it's taken a lot of work to get to where we are right now, and go through and deal with the unions, work with the unions on performance reviews, get them to buy into it, um, which we have to do through the contracts, so that, um, this can all go forward. So, you know, there, there is a lot of activity that's happening, and, uh, a lot of times we, we, we fail to, uh, if you will, toot our own horn of all the stuff that's happening, um, uh, but just wanted to let you know that there, there is a lot of activity going on behind the scenes.
Very good.
Great job.
Thank you much.
Um, let's see.
Silver Street.
Yes. Um, so when you pack it, um, and, uh, this is an ongoing issue that resurrected itself, um, a few months ago, a couple of months ago. Um, and, and apparently, the town looked at this years ago, but, uh, I'm not sure if, when we changed town administrators, or even before then, um, when we had the interim town administrator, that some of these things may not have been, been followed through. And that is, the town owns a street called Old Pleasant Street, which is off of Silver Road. And on that roadway, it has several-
You mean Old Purchase Street?
I'm sorry, Old-
No, yeah.
And it's Silver Street.
Yeah, Old Purchase Street, yep. And in there, there's, um, there's been some encroachment. Um, there's been a large shed that has been put right in the middle of the town's right of way, uh, for one property, and then another property has put a fence up on both sides, uh, where the road runs through it, and then has a bunch of abandoned cars parked in where that right of way is. Uh, so we have been in touch with Greg Corbo, and he has, um, prepared letters that we've sent out, uh, to these two properties, um, in essence, demanding that they do remove their shed, and, um, and at the same time for the, um, for the junkyard, that not only do they remove the cars, take down the fence, but they're also not in compliance for having a junkyard, uh, in the town. They, they haven't been filing their permits. Um, so we, we wanna get that clarified, uh, cleaned up as well. So this is just to bring this to your attention, and it's something that we are working on.
I don't know if we're not keeping up with their permits, but haven't even pulled a permit lately, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions on that? All right. Board of Selectmen update. I'm gonna start with-
Sorry, Alan, I have one quick question on that. Are they, um, informed, they're informed yearly that- Are they informed, they're informed yearly that, or however often it is, that they need to get that permit renewed?
Well, it's up to any business holder in the town to deal with their obligations. And, you know, whether it's a common vehicle license, whether it's a liquor license, whether it's a dealing with your permit to inspect cars. I mean, once you have a license, you have to maintain that. So we don't really chase people around and say, hey, it's a reminder-
But they know when their permit expires, is that correct?
Yes, they do. Yes, they've all signed their permits, yes.
Anything else? All right, Selectmen, comment. Want to go ahead and start off, Sarah?
Sure, thank you. On September 11th, as a retiree, I received a letter from the town of Carver stating, going through the health insurance policies that this board discussed and voted on, and which I was, for which I was not present. And the letter basically said that I had abstained from that discussion. So I spoke to the chair, and a correction, a slight correction was made. Retirees got a letter yesterday with a paragraph at the end with the correction, saying that I had recused myself, which is what happened, and I'd left the room and did not participate or vote on the discussion. But employees received the same letter by email with no paragraph about my vote. And so I think it's very important to let employees know, even though the retirees know, I think it's very important, they need to know that I did not participate in that discussion. And the record also needs to be corrected, because as you recall, and we've been told this a number of times by Greg Corbo, an abstention is a vote. And if I were to have abstained, that means I voted, which would have been a conflict of interest. And so that reflects on my record and my reputation. And I'd like for that email to go out to the employees with that paragraph that was left out of the original email that was sent today.
Can we make it so?
We can. Just also for the record, Elaine and I did have a meeting with all of the active employees two weeks ago, and as part of that, both Elaine and I made it perfectly clear to those employees that you did not participate, you did recuse yourself, you left the room.
I'm sure that you did not meet with every town employee, you know that the town of Carver is the largest employer in town. I'm talking about union and non-union employees.
Just we invited them here.
You had all the teachers, all the people in the teachers' union.
Town hall employees, as I said.
You had every teacher in the room?
I said town hall employees.
Okay, that's my point. All employees need to receive that email. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I want to remind people to please come to the farmer's market. We only have two more weeks.
Yeah.
And that closes. Last day is October 30th. They had a great time, they had a great time last Sunday. A bunch of us were there. We had a food drive for Shane Gives Thanks, and so come on down. Every Sunday, 12 to 4.
Mr. Clark.
Well, I'll just start by giving a shout-out to Andy Carderelli, who helped organize that food drive for Shane Gives Thanks, as he does every year. So thanks to Andy for doing that. We had a, you know, we collected a lot of food in the trailer, and people had the opportunity. We had a number of the Carver department heads and officials in attendance, so people were able to come by and ask some questions and meet a lot of the folks, so I think it was a good day. But thanks to Andy for coordinating that. The South Meadow Village Holly Fair is this coming Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. It's a great opportunity to pick up some of those little Christmas decorations, among other items, that you need for the household. The, I have, I'm looking for help for the Cable Advisory Board, anybody that might have an interest in serving on that. I've got a couple of volunteers already. Our contract with Comcast comes up in a couple of years. It's now is the time. You work about two years out to start having the meetings with Comcast to get that arranged. We've been in touch with Verizon because it would be nice to have competition in town. However, their position is still that they'd have no plans to build out in the town of Carver. But I have, we are using Bill Hewig from Copelman &amp; Page, who was a very experienced cable attorney. And as soon as we have a cable advisory board put together, we'll begin those meetings and try to get a good deal together for the town of Carver. Edoville Railroad is open 10 to 8, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they have the Halloween Pumpkin Festival going on now. So if you go, especially if you go at night, it could be a little spooky and a little, a lot of fun for kids of all ages. And that's basically all I have.
Mr. Robertson.
I have nothing to add. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I had some things in my mind completely shot right now. I would ask if Mr. Clark could probably fill us in, or if he doesn't know, find out what's going on with Channel 15 at Area 58, which is a government access cable. It's been my understanding that there's been some trouble getting, having that up. It's mainly just a black screen when you put it on.
I heard that. I have an inquiry. I'm waiting to hear back. You mentioned that to me the other day, so I've talked to a couple of people. Some people said they noticed something, other people said they didn't. So, you know, I don't know exactly what happened. I will say that if you do encounter a problem with the television channels, remember if you have a computer, you can go online to the Area 58. In fact, a lot of people almost prefer to go to watch it online, because then they can just skip to the section they want to see without having to sit through the entire meeting.
It's on YouTube, right? They put it up on YouTube?
Yep, exactly. So you can find most of the meetings within 48 to 72 hours after they take place. However, we do need to make sure that we're doing the right job on television, so I'll follow up on that.
Okay, appreciate that. And now I remember what I wanted to ask. Mr. Milonowski, during the RDA meeting, citizens brought up the stop sign for going from Park Ave to Montello. I drove up there and found out what the problem was. Has that been taken care of? Because basically, where you come out of park, the stop sign, instead of being up near the real, is way the heck down, further on the curve. So you can't, there is no way, any trucks coming out of there, even though they should know, there's no way for them to see the stop sign. So you just have to have John and his crew take a look at that. And I also know they were concerned about the speed limit. There are no speed limit signs on Montello Street. So maybe that's something we could throw up there. I imagine it's a 35 mile an hour zone, but just therefore they'd have some enforcement for the truck drivers coming down.
Okay.
So that was one thing that I picked up at the RDA meeting that I attended, so I, you know, just thought, see if we can give a little extra push at it. Because I, you know, I drove up there and there were perfectly legitimate complaints, so. And that's all I have. So, moving on, Board to authorize town administrator to sign the LA-5 for the tax rate recap certification.
Yes, annually, what we do is we go through and we put in our certified free cash, well, our proposed certified free cash, that's done through our finance department with Meg Lemay, and that all has to be submitted on these LA-5 forms, which also includes our assessor that has to put this together, which is PK Associates. These forms are then done electronically. It's all done through electronic process, but I do need authorization from the board to submit those once they've been put together by the assessor and by the finance department. Once those are submitted, then they're reviewed in depth by the, by DOR, and they'll come back. And after their review, if you will, a little mini audit on it, then they'll certify the numbers.
Can I have a motion, please?
I will make that motion to give town administrator the right to sign the LA-5 for the tax recap certification.
Second. And a second, further discussion.
Yeah, is this a change in the process, or is this?
Let me just have a view.
And do we, and does the board normally sign off, or do you always sign on behalf of the board?
It's electronically, I sign on behalf of the board.
Okay.
Yep, and then we'll have in November, we'll actually have our tax rate hearing.
Mm-hmm.
We'll start that, but we need this information to start that process.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All those, we have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, just to let you know, this next one-
I'm recusing myself for this next discussion.
Okay, that's fine. We're not going to-
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep. Nope, fully understand. All right, basically this afternoon, we had a, an informational meeting with the town employees concerning where we're at with the health plan, going to the GIC III, which the board we have voted on. I gave an explanation and rationalization of why it was we ended up voting against a agreement or the terms that Michael and Tim had negotiated with the PEC. There were some strong feelings talked about on that one. It was a, I'd say passionate would be a good way to describe it. And they have, you know, and I could fully understand, and I appreciated their comments. A lot of the stuff that was discussed there, I will be bringing up when we go into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. Got a couple of ideas, things that came up during the meeting. I will present what was proposed slash asked slash begged for by those, by a large majority of those in attendance. There are also numerous questions about how we envisioned the mitigation fund to go. So we started a little late. We originally scheduled for 3 o'clock, started about 3:15, because we wanted to make sure we gave all the teachers that wished to attend ample time to get here, because they had to get the kids on the buses and whatnot. So we started at 3:15, and finally, I think we broke up about 5:20. So it was just under two hours. I'm glad we had it, there was a chance to air some grievances, a chance to go ahead and express, to let, make sure everybody knows where the board was coming from and has been coming from. And so we'll leave it at that, and like I say, the couple of things were brought up, and so we'll discuss them at, during the executive session. Did I miss anything, Mr. Robertson or Mr. Milonowski?
Yep, very clear, yep. I think you described it very well. It was an informal meeting, information was passed both ways. I think that was the intent of it. I like the idea that we did have an information meeting. I learned some things. I'm sure they learned some things, so I think we should do more of that. But, yeah, I liked it.
All right, this doesn't require a vote, so moving on, change in KP law hourly rate by $5 an hour.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our current rate for KP laws, $175 per hour. That rate was established in 2015. They are asking for a $5 rate increase. I believe the last rate prior to that was anywhere from seven to nine years before that one took place, and I believe we get a very good value for the rate that we pay them. And I do know that many of the firms are much more expensive, and I think their service is really good. The reason why you, because the board, the legal counsel actually works for the Board of Selectmen, so when there's a rate increase, you have to approve that.
Okay.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I would make that motion that we increase it by $5 per hour for the KP law hourly rate.
Second. Okay, motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of changing the hourly rate for KP law by increasing by $5 per hour, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on, vote to ratify the dispatcher's contract. We had a negotiation session with two of the dispatchers, and Sean, the state level representative, and Michael and myself, last, earlier this week. We had a couple of breaks during the discussions, throwing some things back and forth, and we reached an agreement. Giving the highlights, basically, for signing the, it's actually a double MOA, because this whole thing covers five years. So basically, we have one for FY '16 and '17, and another one, no, '17 and '18? Yeah, '17 and '18. And the last, and the second part is '19, '20, and '21. So it's actually two. The '17, '18 is a zero and a 2% for FY '18. The '19, '20, '21 portion is 1% COLA per year. We established a lead dispatcher stipend of $150 a month. We had a, there's a signing bonus to help offset the zero from 2017 of $925. And what am I missing?
We also adjusted the SEGIS backup. The SEGIS is the Criminal Justice Information System, so that we actually have a supervisor for that, and I believe that went from $700 to $800 per year.
To $1,200. No, that went to $1,200, right?
No, that one's $800.
Okay, and then we had the shift differential, which is for the evening and overnight shifts, went from $7 per shift to $10 per shift.
And the EMD dispatch coordinator, which is Emergency Management Dispatch, I'm sorry, Emergency Medical Dispatch, that one went to $1,200.
Okay, that's the one that went to $1,200.
Yep. The only other thing that I'll point out is also there was some adjustments to the, some clerical errors that were in the contract, and changing some things from 2015 to 2016 in several sections in the contract. But overall, again, as Alan worked hard in putting this together, and this was all done, even though we started back in February, we were trying to meet, we finally met and got it all done in one day.
Yeah, it came together quickly. I would entertain a motion for the board to ratify pending ratification by the union of the contract.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, first, a motion made and seconded. Any questions or comments?
How do the dispatchers feel about the contract, in your opinion?
We all left happy.
Good.
Well, at least satisfied. How sad?
That's good to know. Thank you.
There were, there were three of them, and two of them were in the negotiation session, and they approved their piece. So I would hope they can get, I think they have the majority of the vote.
There were some give and take on both sides, and they got things, some things they wanted. We got some things that we needed, and, you know, it's one of those you walk out, and yeah, it was, it was a union negotiation, but it was good and-
It's good to hear.
So. Anything else? Hearing nothing. All those in favor of the motion is made, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, vote on annual town meeting for April 10th at 6:00 PM, and we have to set an article submission deadline.
So, Mr. Chairman, our last meeting, or joint meeting, we had the four-step process laid out, and that is all based upon a annual town meeting on April 10th, which is the Tuesday before school vacation week, and it's also before town elections. There is discussion on whether or not town meeting should start at 6:00 versus 7:00. And the recommendation for article submission is by our December 5th meeting. That will give us ample time.
Do we have to address the 6:00 PM versus 7:00 PM start as well now?
You don't have to, as long as you lock the date in. If you want to postpone the timing to your next meeting, you can do that.
I'm just concerned about people that work being able to get back in time.
Split the difference, 6:30?
Because usually what you have is, as we all know, there's, there is the 15 to 30 minutes of people walking around before town meeting starts. So there is usually that dead zone in there. So a 6:30 would be really reasonable, because then, in reality, you're going to start at 7:00.
I'll make a motion that we set the annual town meeting for April 10th at 6:30 PM and the article submission deadline December 5th.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Do I hear any discussion? Hearing none.
Putting it on my calendar.
Very good. Hearing none. All those in favor of having town meeting on April 10th at 6:30 with article submission deadline being December 5th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, a minute's license topics not reasonably anticipated. Moving on, the minutes licensed topics not reasonably anticipated. The minutes of 9/5/17.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th?
Second. I'm sorry.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from September 5th to 2017, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Now for the joint meeting from September 28th, 2017.
We're going to table that one.
We're going to table that one. Okay, good. Okay, common particular license, entertainment license to Tulino Inc., also known as Fiesta Char. That part I could get. Do we have anybody here from that? No?
Make a motion that we issue this license pending all applicable tax things.
And all the other...
And all the other things.
Other boxes have been marked.
Exactly. Right, all boxes have been checked.
And we have a second for the discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that goes. Okay, we have two requests for use of Sampson's Pond parking permit. For, one is for May 20th for the Urban Bass Fishing League, and the other one is 7/29/18 for the, by the East Side Sport Fishing Club. What is the pleasure of the Board? Do you want to handle...
Make a motion to approve both of them?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Discussion.
I have a little bit of concern that I would like to ask the Board to maybe table this for a month or so till I can do some research. What I'm finding in our lakes is an intrusive plant and it's beginning to take over. The plants, propellers are getting tangled up in it. I don't know what's happening or how it's going, but I can tell you that it's becoming a very severe problem. And so what I'd like to do is do a little research on this with maybe the state forest people or the Games of Fish Wildlife or something and come back to you and report on where this is coming from and how can we stop it in the future.
Are you thinking it could be related to allowing...
I had a, you know, private conversation, but I had a cabin in Maine and I used to have to get a sticker in Maine and actually prove to them that I power washed the bottom of my boat if I was coming from Massachusetts and my propeller and my trailer, it had to be cleaned thoroughly and I had to go to the town hall and prove that I had done that because they didn't want any of this kind of plant in their waterworks.
So we might, you may well come back and recommend that be a piece of...
Something. I'd like to just table it if we could and give me time to research it and find out what we can do as a Board.
I will draw my motion to approve and suggest we table the issue till Selectmen Robertson can get back to us.
Also on that, I've had a chance to talk to the Conservation Commission and the chairman of that has raised a similar issue and we've asked him to take a look at not only that invasive species, the algae there, but other invasive species we have in town. We have John Woods working on Japanese knotweed, which is an invasive bamboo that you see, you know, a lot of times on the highway. And I'm sure once you see it, you'll remember how it was a little bit and then grew to a lot and then it gets really thick. So these invasive species, particularly with having a farming environment or something that we need to take a hard look at. In addition to that, we may also need to look at, in the future, maybe putting a small boat dock, if you will, down at Sampson's Pond to be able to do some investigation when people come down there to kind of see what's happening and have an attendant down there to potentially do some inspections. Because it's tough to get the weeds out once they start and once the props go through there from the engines, it just shoots it up into a million seeds.
Yeah, exactly.
And then it keeps on going.
As of right now, if I owned a boat, I could just throw in the water down there at a public dock, right?
Yep, nobody...
So, I mean, I hate the idea of more regulation where there's a requirement to get a permit in order to use the pond, but I think relative to the health of the pond, it may be something we have to consider.
I agree.
There's already a permit to use the pond. That's our dump stickers. And if you're out of town, you have to get an out of town resident.
To park it.
That's for parking.
That's to park your boat. You park your car.
Yeah, you can put it in.
Correct.
You don't have to have a...
Not for the boat, right.
Perhaps having some sort of requirement to demonstrate that you've properly, as you say, just even power washing the boat and making sure you're not bringing any invasive species with you.
I think with all due respect, that's a good conversation when we have to bring this up again. It's kind of out of the scope of what was on the agenda. So right now we have a, the original motion has been withdrawn with a new motion to table and I need a second for that.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion to table both of those requests made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that takes care of that. Then we have a request to use Charlotte Park for trunk or treat on October 31st from 3:00 to 10:00 PM.
I make a move, we issue that permit.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right. Request for one day's special license bartending service of New England. I believe this is at the Sportsman Club.
Yes, whose birthday?
Whose birthday?
Somebody's.
Oh, somebody's.
I'll make a motion to approve or second whatever things we're at.
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, motion, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, unanimous. Next meeting, we have one on 11/7 and 12/5, and I believe we might need one on 10/31. That'll depend on what transpires between now and the 27th of October when we have the hearing for the arbitrator at the State Licensing or Insurance Board.
Just a heads up, Mr. Chairman, I will be out of town traveling on 10/31 and 11/7. Business.
You know, we have remote participation.
Ooh!
Fine. We can bring the little speakerphone in, right, Mr. Dunn?
We can bring in the video camera.
Oh, we'll save the world that. All right, Sarah, you want to recuse yourself, take a motion?
Does this executive session include retirees as well?
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Yep. I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
And we're going to adjourn after executive session.
With the adjourning and not to reconvene in open session for adjournment. We're just going to adjourn from there. Right?
Can we do that?
Yeah.
We don't have to return to open session?
Well, you have to return for purpose of...
Okay, we're going to return just for purpose of adjournment.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions. The PEC, IAC Healthcare that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town have held an open session and to reconvene in open session for purpose of adjournment.
Play your second.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Mr. Robertson?
Dave Robertson says aye.
Alan Dunham says aye. This meeting, regular session, is adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.